All right, let's put this meeting to order. We have a forum with six directors present, Director Palmer, Director Shaw, Director Bland, myself, Director Robinson, Director Ward, and Director Mennel. Everyone, please rise and join me in pledging allegiance to the flag.
Pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America, to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, liberty, and justice for all.
Thank you. Please be seated. Do we have any public comments? Do we have any sign up? You know, Mr. Now.
Anybody sign up?
Bonnie around the corner over there?
No, she has.
I never know if she's over there or not. Like a ghost. Anyway, okay, no public comment. Discussion possible action approval of minutes from the August regular board meeting.
Make a motion right through the minutes.
Motion to approve by Director Ward.
Second.
And a second by Director Shaw. I was gonna try and keep up on it, you know. Any discussion? Oh. Missed that, did we?
Yep.
Okay.
Yeah, I'll just take a figure out how those.
No, you get it going, and then we'll bring it up to date.
It's recording it now.
Okay, this meeting was called to order at eight oh one. A forum was established with six directors present. Director Gaines is not here. Pledge allegiance was said, and there are no public comments. We're currently at discussion possible action approval of minutes for the August regular board meeting with a motion from Director Ward and a second from Director Shaw. Is there any discussion?
I would like to move number eleven on the agenda.
Well, we're not on that yet, Director. We're on the minutes.
I thought y'all already had it.
No, we haven't taken a vote yet.
Okay.
All those in favor, raise your right hand. All those opposed, same sign. This carries unanimously.
Wes, just real quick, it's six oh one, right? Meeting was brought to order, six oh one.
Excuse me, you're right, six oh one.
Right, yeah.
So.
Does it stop on you?
No, it's full of memory, which means it has another, so it's been deleted. Do you have another recorder?
No, that's a new one that we got.
Well, it's full of memory, so it's probably on the hot setting. You're gonna have to delete it. So, Marty, do you not mess with this thing?
I can try.
All right, we're gonna pause for technical difficulties. Did have to get the information off of it. I don't know if it's been downloaded or not. We used to do it with the newspaper all the time.
That's why the old tape decks were so handy. You better order one of those.
Well, I just download them every week.
I think I got one.
Download them every week at the paper and clear them off.
Still get them.
I tried to pause.
Okay.
He's up. Still paused.
All right. Now we are back. And we are on agenda item number six, discussion possible action acceptance of Charles Gaines resignation letter.
Now, we want to move, I wanted to move that to move eleven up in front of that, because I believe it's very relevant.
Okay, what do you make a motion, Director Robinson?
I make a motion and we move eleven up to in front of six.
Okay, motion's been made to move agenda item eleven up to, uh, to now, before six. Is there a second?
I'll say it.
Okay. It's been made and seconded to move agenda eleven up to, uh, now, number six. All those in favor, raise your right hand. All those opposed, same sign. Motion fails.
I had it fail to three to three.
It fails if there's not four votes in the affirmative, Director.
Okay.
It takes four votes in the groundwater conservation district. It takes the majority.
Have you read what I just handed you?
Of the board. No, I haven't.
I'd ought to.
Well, I'd be glad to. And what is this in relations to, Director?
Well, if we're not gonna bring it up till eleven, we'll just wait until then, but it's relevant that we do it before we do number six and vote Mr. Gaines out.
Well, the motion failed.
Okay, then we'll wait till eleven.
So, item number six, discussion possible action acceptance of Charles Gaines resignation letter. Do we have a motion?
I move that we accept Charlie Gaines' resignation.
Is there a second?
I'll second it.
Motion's been made and accepted, uh, made and seconded to accept Director Gaines' resignation letter. All those in favor, raise your right hand. All those opposed, same sign. You're standing? Okay, motion carries.
Y'all are kinda unique because the position down needs to be filled by the county commissioners, right?
That is correct.
So, we need to let the county commissioners know that the resignation was filed and accepted. They need to get a name.
At this point, they can, they can appoint. I don't think they could appoint until we accepted it.
I think I agree.
General Manager, uh, general number seven, General Manager's report.
James, since the last board meeting, we've only had three applications for exempt wells. Um, two of them were down off of three seventy-seven, off of two seventy-seven, one was up north. Uh, of course, Marty continues to inspect the large wells on a monthly basis. Includes recording and meter readings, photos of the meetings of the meters and working on our database for Jim. Uh, the region J next meeting is scheduled for October the eighth. GMA seven will be October the twenty-third to adopt the final, uh, draft of the region J. I'm sorry, I got this wrong. At the last region J meeting, uh, they adopted a preliminary water plant, region J water plant. And so at this next meeting that they have, it will be October twenty-third. And they'll be going ahead and voting to have a consultant to send the water plan to the state and to the Texas Water Development Board. And also the consultant will be reporting on the seventh cycle of regional water plan, which runs from twenty-six, two thousand twenty-six to two thousand thirty-one. Uh, GMA ten made in September, Call Your Consultant, uh, consulting presented a review of the Southern Trinity, uh, jam files. Uh, there was discussion on the timeline for joint planning purposes and reports on the regional water planning activities for region J KNL. Next meeting is scheduled for sometime in November. I didn't have this on the phone, but I'll slide it in. Marty, Bonnie, and I have completed our annual cybersecurity training and received certification on that. And when we reach that point, I have a couple items I'd like to press on our cover agenda. That's all I have.
Uh, what about? This one?
Oh, okay. He just got that. I copied that this morning. I done an email on our text yesterday afternoon, so I copied it. Uh, this will be October the fourth, this, uh, on Saturday. It's through the Hill Country Alliance, kind of a, uh, traveling thing throughout the state on different water issues. This one is going to be in Concan, and it's a house pasture cattle company, is what it's called, if somebody are familiar with it. Uh, there's some pretty good speakers on there. I believe it's gonna be addressing a number of different items, the, uh, kind of water issues for the western hill country. And it will run from nine to nine to three, I believe.
Are you gonna try and attend that one, you know?
Yes.
Excellent. I don't know that I can make that one or not. I will probably. What is that? Uh, you gotta know about what, it's a deadline on that, isn't it?
Yeah, actually, we just got.
This RSVP.
Might be tomorrow. Might have been yesterday. PR luck.
But if anybody.
There's one on.
RSVP was yesterday.
There it is. RSVP is required. Uh, space is limited. Uh, I don't see a date on the RSVP. There it is, it there. There at the top. Yep, it was yesterday.
Yeah.
Really?
But I had.
How'd you get in there?
I told, I noticed that, of course, we did, I just got a text on it yesterday afternoon, so I called, uh, the Hill Brand this morning, and he said it wasn't too late to go ahead and sign up. He's one of the speakers. Said, go ahead, wouldn't you like to sign up, boy? Yeah.
See what I get, backed up at the end of this week.
Sign you up, whatever. Give you a phone number. I think there's a phone number on there to call or something.
Okay, now, check everything again. Mr. Now, is that everything? No?
Sorry, thank you.
Mr. Burden?
I know a couple you got here early and looked at the board package and the graphs. I don't know if, wait a couple minutes if you wanna flip through that and take a look. If there's any questions, they're still the presentation. It's gonna be short. Um, and as before, everything that's presented here that we'll show, and then all the board package that's on the board to get posted, let's say. So, start off, Juan, I appreciate being here. I'm excited about the opportunities. I think Vince and I were able to spend a little bit of time together today, and I think we're definitely going in the right direction. Um, our monitoring network, we've got, this is same map, um, well over a hundred locations that we're collecting information from. Marty, go ahead. And so just a reminder, permitted wells, and the numbers on here are important. I'm gonna show some pumping production numbers, et cetera, where the, where the water's coming out of. These are over the last five years consistently pumped more than fifty acre feet a year, um, some more than others. Next slide. Intermittently, again, the same numbers as we've shown before, but somehow, you know, maybe pumped over fifty-one year and not the other, and this is going back to the last five years. And then again, the non-operational wells. Or should be the next one. So, a lot of, we've got a lot of non-operational wells, and right now, there's a hundred and forty-four, forty-six, um, permits and a hundred and fifteen permitted wells. And right now, at a hundred and fifteen, there's forty that have pumped this year. And then, so from non-operation, I think I, do I have a picture in here somewhere? Right, I got those questions again last week. What's a non-operational well? This is a non-operational well. This is something that's not connected. Uh, this is down south. Is there another picture? One more. Yeah, and, uh, this is another one. Uh, Director Robinson, I think this is actually what from yours, um, but it's not, it's not operational. It doesn't work. They're not pumping. Yeah. Um, uh, we have.
Has no spark plug wires.
No, no power, no whatever. But again, non-operational means if they, physically, you can't get water out of the ground from one of the, from something that looks like. Um, next, let's go in. So, pumping production, um, where, so each of the numbers that are on the bottom correspond to the maps that are, that are shown. I do know that there's, that there is an air. I will admit there's an air on this because P one one four is an operational well, but it just started pumping this year, and it shows up as a non-operational. I need to fix that. I recognize that. Um, but, so these are the numbers that have been pumped so far. Um, they just put that well in operation this year. Um, but these are the wells so far that are pumped, and these are the numbers, and if you break it out by months, next slide. Um, this is where, it's, it's a little colorful, um, lots of data here, but again, this is from each well what's been pumped, uh, for each, each month. There's a couple wells that for whatever reason, we didn't get access, we didn't get numbers, and those will show January to May, or January to June, May to August. There's, there's a couple combined numbers in there, um, but for the most part, we've got monthly numbers for every.
Can I ask you a quick question?
Yes, sir.
Do you have a total that's been pumped this year?
Uh, six thousand eight hundred and six.
Good, just.
That's over the, that's over the whole of the whole county?
Uh, yes, sir.
Okay.
Yeah, acre feet. Now, there are, I've got a couple that we haven't got yet. I think, um, I don't wanna name names, but. Somebody, yeah, um, that we, that I know that there's some are missing, but as in my source, what's been meter, you know, meter readings, meter inspections, thanks to Marty, we've got telemetry data that's doing this, reported field net data that we get every month. There's a, there's a couple that we have not been able to access, and so there's, there's a couple, there's some blocks there, and so the number, the best available number I have right now is six thousand eight hundred. We realize that's probably a little low, and we'll get those numbers eventually. There's meters on them. We'll get them eventually. Um, but, but that's what we've got right now. Then answer your question.
Yeah, I was just curious. We, well, we, we had a lot of totals running across the bottom.
I just literally looked at that number about an hour ago, so.
I was just curious.
I happen to have it in my head.
Wonder what the total was.
But this isn't, this is important because I think there, there hasn't been a real monthly accountability on some of this. I know there's been a lot of discussion about reading meters once a month, getting a telemetry, who's gonna do it, how you do it, do your rules say that you do? And all of that, I know there'll be rules discussion at some point, but we're getting numbers, um, and whether they come from, from a field tech or whether they come from a landowner or whatever, um, th- this is the numbers, and, and we're, we're making progress on getting that. I just wanted to share that.
Yeah, I actually have the monthly. You're, you're actually getting your monthly data, what you're telling, what you're telling me.
Uh, not all of it. Eighty-five, ninety-nine, ninety-five. Those numbers I don't know, but we're getting some. And tracking it, you know, better.
Um, Jim, quick question if I could.
Yes, sir.
Are some of those numbers, uh, not metered? Are they the alternate methods? Like, isn't then, this could be urban legend, but aren't there some wells that the numbers come from, you know, the pump comes on and then it's turned off, and then you get a number not from a meter?
Um.
Urban legend.
Well, the only, um, so there's a field, there's field net, you know, and.
Yeah, but do the field net.
Monitors, uh, monitors flow, there's.
Those are timed, right? Like, it's based on time and pumping.
Time and, and rate, time and flow. So, you're pumping at eighteen hundred gallons a minute for six hours, whatever the number, or say for ten hours, I can, I can do that math in my head a little better.
Right.
But you, you can.
Yeah, I understand.
Yeah, you get a volume.
But some of those don't necessarily have meters, or is that not true? They do have meters and they have this, or they have that and only that?
Some of them, some of them have both. There are, I know for a fact there are some down south where there's all sulfur, and we haven't been able to get a meter to work. That, it's all stainless steel pipe because of the corrosive nature of it. Um, we've, there's been some purchasing of some clamp-on meters on the outside. They haven't been installed yet, and so there are, the answer to your question is, is both. Some have, some have both. There's some that are just field net without a meter.
Right, yeah.
So, it answers your question?
Yeah.
Um, and if you need that exact number, it's gonna be a small percentage in terms of the number, but, um, and there's some, we're talking new equipment. We've got a lot of great ideas moving forward here. There's some discussion about how to handle that a little better, but we're getting numbers from them, and it's not just, uh.
No, I just, yeah.
Random.
I can talk to you later about it, but, you know, I'm not sure our rules are, uh, you know, good enough yet, but we can talk about rules.
And I think in his, some of his scope and looking at wh- where the rules are and for discussion a little bit later on how that, how that needs to happen.
Yeah.
There is, there is one alternate method, method, one that it's been that way for years. They don't pump a lot, but we're working with them to try to get that fixed also, all right?
That's the one with the trench or whatever.
Yeah, and I mean, that's a, that's a valid way to measure flow, and it was approved a long time ago, but again, I would rather have something a little more concrete, would love to have something that goes up into the cloud, and we've got the ability to do that. If there's some health issues with the individuals, and we're, we're working through that. So, but the goal, it's on the agenda, we're getting it done.
Yeah, cool, thanks.
Yeah, please, yes, welcome. Um, I'm gonna try to go slow here. Okay, so, pumping, why do you need pumping? Because there's a lot of discussion about, you know, these wells are pumping here, and everybody, and the spring's going up, going down. Um, this is, this is a snapshot from yesterday, and what the, what it shows is this is the spring from last year and the spring from this year. The, the dark blue line is this year, and the gold, it's kind of gold brownish, that's from last year. And not that these are the only two years that we need to look at, but I was just kind of curious, where are we from last year? Um, right now, at the end of the year, we're pretty close to about where we were last year, twenty-nine point four, twenty-four point five.
Pretty similar, actually.
What's that?
Pretty similar.
Yeah, real, real similar, same kind of situation. Um, we got a big rain event on July twenty-third last year, or in, July twenty-third, twenty twenty-four. This year was July fourteenth or whatever, put water back in the aquifer, and we saw the same response. Um, so comparison of the spring, again, monthly pumping numbers, where's it, where's the water coming out? It's coming out of the ground here, and those of you that have been involved in drilling wells, and for me being out in the field, I can drill a well right here and get water, and I can drill a well right over here and not get water. So, you know, understanding where that is and where it's coming out of the aquifers, et cetera, and stuff, we're working on. Next slide.
Real quick, Jim, and this is more for Vince, too. It drops off in April pretty regularly, right? I mean, that's what that's showing, like, in that timeframe in the spring.
Well, in my mind, in, uh, in, for twenty twenty-five, as of February, it's going straight down.
Yeah, February marks April, let's say.
Okay.
Yeah.
And, and we've got, we've got, we've got pumping numbers, and what the, the fallacy is, is that people only pumping some, people are pumping all year round.
No, yeah, I understand that. Yeah, but, you know, when you see those graphs, that would be something that hydrology could shed more light on, right?
Right, and you're looking, and so last year, of that will transpiration, it was eleven inches. You know, we had eleven inches more than we did the year before. That means you need, so, we needed eleven more inches of rain to get to the same level of recharge that's going into the aquifer. So, as things start to heat up, the, the trees and the plants and everybody else, it's not just people pumping, the, the mesquite, we talked about brush clearing up in recharge zones or whatever. Got giant oak trees that are a lot bigger than they were fifty years ago. That, they're taking a lot of water out of the ground. I'm not saying that's the sole source. I'm just saying, we, we can't just be pointing the finger in one direction. Need to leave all options open to try to figure out what's going on.
You can see it there, and that's what we need to figure out as we move.
Well, I mean, look at, look at August two thousand twenty-five. I mean, we're going straight down right now, and had we not got that rain in July, we'd be dropped, right? And, you know, and we got, with the same thing as we did last year, we got, we got five inches of rain up in that area. We got twelve inches in Anacachoe, and other people got more or less. We got five inches of rain up there, and we got the same response as we did last year. You, spring came up twenty, thirty, forty CFS at one point in twenty-four hours, thirty hours. And so this feeds into where I'm trying to go. It's like, so do, do some cor, let's do some correlations, but Director Palmer, I'm looking at all options.
Actually.
You know, and I shared, Vince and I drove around May, and I said, we can't discount anything, but we need to, before we make a decision and just point fingers and what are we doing, we need to understand. And in a car stock of her, it's not reservoir engineering. It's not, you put something over here, and it depressurizes something, you know, instantaneously. It's, we, you've got to understand it, and then we've got some pools, and I think I talked to, uh, Director Robinson, you and I talked about logging some holes and doing some things or whatever, trying to really understand. I've got a piece of equipment I'm recommending we buy that's a casing detector, it's total depth of wells, and that information will feed into what your new hydrogeologist is gonna do to really begin to understand, and don't discount anything. I mean, in my mind, we gotta look at everything. I mean.
One of the things that I, I just wanna mention, because I think most people don't know it, uh, when the district began over twenty years ago, most of the information on these wells wasn't available to the permit team. Uh, most of these holes have never been logged or video. Uh, some of the wells, we don't even know what the ultimate depth is.
Right.
Um, so, all of that information, particularly in specific areas, may be very beneficial to us figuring out which way the water go.
Yeah, and I know, Mr. Heinrich, you and I spoke about, you're talking to Paul Royal, and some of those wells he's trying to log were collapsed, and there's a little bit of water coming up, but they're not twelve hundred feet like they were before, or eight hundred feet. You know, they've collapsed in the bottom, and we see just.
And if we don't know how deeply their case, we don't know where the water's coming from, so there's, there's a lot of information we need to get.
Right, absolutely, and we're going in the right direction. I mean, I think we're, you know, we're, we're getting in the right direction, and we got, there's so much information, but there's some missing pieces to link it together. And we've got great geology now that was done, um, you know, Dr. Bill reached out to Vince, and Vince, we've got some great geology, we've got lots of data from into these wells, but just because I've got a well pumping eighteen hundred gallons a minute, you know, what aquifer, it's, maybe go through three aquifers, and they say it's cased all the way down to the bottom or wherever, but, you know, like you said, the, the information that we've got, we, we need to understand where that water's coming from, and somebody with a sixty-foot well, you know, and, and it goes dry, well, you know, maybe the well should be a little deeper, um, you know, or maybe not, you know, I don't know. It's just, there's a lot of, there's a lot of variables, and let's figure out what those variables are so we can make some informed decisions. Um, but I don't wanna spend a lot of time, let's get this, okay, so this was actually a graph I showed back in May, um, or, I don't know, several months ago, but I just updated a little bit. Dewey's on the top. There is a, um, this is a production well right up, uh, the northeastern part of the Pinto Valley, and then the spring on the bottom, and we got the one rain event in July, spring shot up immediately. Dewey took a li- little longer to rise. You can see, um, the curve from the pumping well and Dewey are pretty similar. Spring goes up, starts going down immediately, spring goes up, goes down. There's some, there's some similarities here, but there's not direct correlation between the spring flow and where the water was up and doing. I've showed you this before, um, but just so this group understands, I'm looking at it again. This isn't just look at it once or whatever, as, as we continue to every month, get more information, we, um, you know, we start, we just reevaluate and look at it again, and, and every piece of information's helpful. So, if you look at the spring, spring went up in July, it came, it's looking, it's going straight down. Dewey was still going up, the, the production well, even though they're pumping, it's still going up. Now, the spring is starting to, has gone up quite a bit just for this little bit of rain that we've got. I would expect and predict, and I'm, I'm happy to be wrong, but Dewey and the other well are gonna start going up here, give it a few weeks, and we'll slowly get water back up into that area. Just doesn't respond as fast as a spring.
Next slide.
Okay, so this is something is different, and I have talked about Tulareosa well, and for two, for those Tulareosa well up, uh, three thirty-four, Tulareosa Road, uh, Grass Valley area, that well, um, it's eight hundred feet, seven eighty-seven, I think. It's down in the Edwards. When that well responds, and I know, Ms. Marsh, I've talked to you about this in the past, that if you want to know when the spring is gonna flow, look at Tulareosa well, for whatever reason, and this is something, you know, we can take all of this information, and Vince can do some very detailed studies about why and incorporate all this information if you want. Um, and there's a lot of these kind of things that we can look at, the property behind the Ford, you know, going to the west. Um, but Tulareosa in the spring, it just mimics it, you know, and stand, so if you look at the, uh, Y-axis, the up and down axis on the right-hand side, that number one ninety-two is there for a reason. The opposite, the anecdotal information, the observational water level data that we look at, is that when Tulareosa well gets to about one ninety, one ninety-one, ninety-one and a half, the spring has gone dry. And from going back to twenty twenty, you see it goes down, twenty twenty-two, right down there, one ninety-one, the spring was dry. It, and we got a little bit of rain, it came back up, look at twenty twenty-four, the same thing, it went dry, twenty twenty-five, that blue line, when it hits that bottom, uh, horizontal line at one ninety-two, the spring went dry. And there is a direct correlation somehow between what is happening up there. There's no irrigation, there's no, there's no pumping up there. The pressure in the aquifer is what this system runs on. You're dragging head down in this direction, and what we haven't seen is the correlations on, of the immediate correlations of pumping, on, we're looking at Dewey and some of those kind of things. We're still looking, we're still collecting information. The, the one interesting thing for me about this is that Los More Springs, there was a whole big letter. is that Lost More Springs, there was a whole big letter about the mag and it's over this and, and all, everybody, a lot of people signed it in the community. About GMA seven and the mag for GMA seven, this what it is and it needs to be adjusted and we've been knowing that it needs to be adjusted for a lot of years. There's processes on how that needs to happen. But Lost More Springs is GMA seven. Tulareosa well, where this is directly tied to is GMA ten. And so if we're going to talk about where, what the mag is and what the pumping is and what's influencing the spring or whatever, it's not just look at GMA seven stuff, we need to start looking at GMA ten. And Vince and I talked about that, I've identified some locations, we're monitoring information, we're collecting data from that. But the, but the DFC for GMA seven is really tied to the DFC and GMA ten. And so are we, and the GMA ten DFC is high enough, or I don't know, I mean, you'd have to really put, drill a well right next to it if it's going to lower, get lower or not. I mean, that's, there's nothing happening up there, it's very, it's all natural. But I think there's some discussions that need to happen. And again, I keep pointing at Vince here, sorry, but we've talked about this, th- these are things that we need to look at. And I'm collecting data, collecting information, we've got a lot of platforms, I got some screenshots on where all this data is going and how we're getting it up in the cloud, real-time stuff. But there is some discussion on, as you move forward in some of these decisions that need to happen just from the state. You know, there's legislative, you know, timelines here to, to, don't discount anything. Just look in one area and try to blame people for doing stuff, whatever, look at it holistically. Let's figure out what we can get, let's get, collect the data we need. And if there are very specific things that get, need to get analyzed for rules or for DFCs or because people have certain concerns or hypotheticals and speculative about certain things, let's look at it scientifically and we've got the data to begin to do that, right? Go to the next slide, I've got, does this, oh, my GMA seven, GMA ten, next. Yes, sir.
We have a question from the public. Yes, ma'am.
Can I ask you, I've read some studies in nineteen sixty-four, the spring went dry for the first time. And as far as the, for Texas Water Development Board in the Edwards, Iger County Water District, did a, a report. And he kept referencing V six in that swell.
Okay, I'm the Pratt Pop, Pratt Pop, that Don South's Pratt. V six, okay.
I know it well.
Oh, do you? Okay, I'm sorry, I thought you were trying to quiz me, okay.
He works with Tony Pratt.
Yeah.
I know what that is.
Right.
So that was directly like a correlation to when the spring went dry. He credited the increased irrigation pumping step northwest and particularly southwest. As to creating a cone of depression, lowering the head pressure.
Right.
So it's not like it was depleting the aquifer all over the county.
Right.
It was a head pressure because of the space feet and the humidity to the springs.
Yeah, and so on the original Pratt properties, um, there, there were a lot of wells out there and there were a lot of really deep wells that went through the Austin down into the Edwards and they were pumping a lot. And so it would not surprise me that in nineteen sixty-four, when they were pumping those deeper wells, that it would have some influence. The wells that are out there now are completed in the Austin, they're two hundred and fifty feet deep and they communicate with each other, but like all of the rain that we got up there, when the spring came up, those wells didn't do anything. There was no, there was no correlation, no response to any of those wells. Vince and I drove out there today, I, uh, Director Palmer, um, has, has asked me about this before. I think it's something Vince can look at, but Vince and I drove out there today, I showed him the property, I showed him the wells. We've got, um, they're, they were, they're new rehabilitated wells, they're two hundred and fifty feet deep. I've got monitoring instruments on every single one, this pumping. And I also have a monitoring instrument on a well that's not pumping and this is real-time stuff that goes to the cloud. And again, that's a great question. I'm not discounting, I'm not discounting anything, but it's something that I spoke with, with Vince about, about let's, you know, hey, this is the data, this is what we've got. We looked at, we were on a Zoom call last week and we looked at some of the, some of the curves. You know, hey, you see a pump, you see it recover, you know, that kind of stuff, um, yeah, follow up.
So, so the permitted wells, there, there seems to be quite a bit southwest. Do we have monitoring equipment on the wells more southwest than the V six and the old Pratt?
Oh, I do. Yeah, I will not be shit, I, hang on a second, let me, where's Adam? Let me be clear in my response, because I'll hear about this later. I, I cannot tell you for sure yes or no on V six, I, I have it documented. I've got, uh, it's, we have it all digitized, so I've got V six and all of that stuff. They're all individual wells, they're, uh, identified, we've got geochemical signatures, they did a lot of geochem stuff, we pulled all that out.
But more southwest than V six, do you have monitoring equipment more southwest?
Where, so I, I don't know exactly where V six is right now.
It's been on the Pratt property.
Yeah, okay.
All right, I want, I want to stop this because we're getting off on a good track. We can have this discussion after the meeting.
I'm happy to talk.
And, and, and y'all can get together and, and discuss that, because we need, we need to move along. Go ahead and finish up.
We can go back to, you know, don't, don't change it, but I can go back to that, uh, monitoring map or whatever, because that includes monitoring permitted exempt, includes everybody and we can kind of look and see where that is. So this is just, this is one of our online platforms, this is all, every stuff. We've got each one of those wells, you can click on it, it'll give you a little bit of information, monitoring permitted rain gauges. Kenny County, we've got quad eight oh seven boundaries on there. She has done a fabulous job on getting all of our exempt stuff, we've got a lot of exempt wells. We've got coordinates on that, we're pulling all that, that'll all get up into here. At some point, we will need to do inspections on all that, but that's not super high priority right now. So every platform, next, what's my next one? Signifiers, so this is, this is real-time stuff, this is Fort Clark, I use them as a, they're a public agency, do you want to? So we've got those open and closed, the little pumps, when pumps, pump, small pump is open, means the circuit's open, so it's not pumping. The big pump is closed, circuit's closed, it is pumping. Hundred and two feet of, of, of pressure or of head above the sensor satellite, go down next. Okay, so this is again, this is all real-time stuff, but you've got, and we've been doing this, I don't know for how long, but for a while. So the pump, the yellow up and down, that just means the pump's being turned on, turned off. The black lines up and down, that's actually water level and you can see it just goes up and down. I ran that for, I don't know, since June or whatever, but you can see that's kind of when they started pumping the big one. These are the same graphs that when you, when this is Fort Clark, but when you were pumping, you saw the direct correlation where the, the, the spring basin, water level go down and come back up, go down and go back up. Okay, next, what's my next one? This is an incentive platform, same thing, but these wells are not included on the other ones, what's the next? What do I have? So again, just a list, this isn't everybody, you can go past this, but there's a whole big list. So, okay, so this is a mess, but each one, you can, this is what I have right now, depth, temperature and rainfall. Since August twenty-four, you can see those spikes and stuff. August, oh, that's just this year, okay. Anyway, but a lot of data's in here, go next. What you, then what you want to do is you want to look at, so each individual, so all of this stuff is, we've got, you know, so duly twenty-nine feet of head above the sensor, you've got to correct that for ground elevation or leveled up to groundwater. Temperature, temperature was warm in duly's, water sits real up to the, by the top. That pipe goes down, that pipe heats up real quite a bit and so, you know, you go down twenty feet and you've got the waters, uh, real high. What's the next one? Oh, that's it. Um, any, sorry, um, any questions? Good job. I like this, after the, the questions happy.
The Tulareosa.
Oh, yeah. Yeah, yeah, yeah. Well, and what tells a story? It, it keeps, it keeps doing that. I mean, we, I said that five years ago and, but it keeps, when we get the rain, it keeps following that. And this is before the spring went dry. And it's, it's the lowest, it's gotten the lowest since it's been recorded and I think, Greg, I think, uh, uh, that was originally an EAA well. I think, uh, that Tulareosa well and the Texas Water Development Board has it now. But, yeah, and deep into the Edwards.
Thanks, Jim.
Thank you, Jim. Item number eight, discussion possible action to adopt a resolution tax rate twenty twenty-five, twenty twenty-six. I wouldn't entertain any motion.
Make a motion to approve.
Motion's been made to approve by Director Ward.
Second.
Seconded by Director Shaw. Is there any discussions? All those in favor, raise your right hand. All those opposed, same sign, motion carries unanimously. Item number nine, discussion possible action to adopt a resolution budget twenty twenty-five, twenty twenty-six.
I move that we accept the budget for twenty-five, twenty-six.
Motion's been made by Director Shaw to approve the budget. Do we have a second?
Second.
Seconded by Director Blam. All those in favor, raise your right hand. All those opposed, same sign. Here's unanimously. Item number ten, discussion possible action fee schedule. Ah, I see, we did get our daily. That is changing this last session, isn't it?
That daily, that daily fee on drilling without a permit? That one had gone up from ten thousand to twenty-five, right?
That's for any violation of anyone, any rule or any part of the statute.
Not just drilling well, that's anything.
Anything.
Yeah, right, yeah. Because they talked about that in the groundwater or something, if I'm not mistaken.
That changed since nineteen ninety-five, so, and that puts us in line with PCQ. I'm not aware of anybody who's ever gotten ten thousand dollars a day.
I don't know.
And I doubt we'll see if they get twenty-five thousand dollars.
It's.
We'll see how it goes.
For compliance.
Yeah.
Not for collection.
That's right.
Do we have a motion?
Is this a point where I can ask questions?
You can, usually you start off with a motion in a second, but you know, you want to start off discussions, fine, I mean.
Discussing this on the fines. Do I have to make a motion to discuss it?
No, Director, you do not, I just said that. If you want to discuss it first, that's fine.
I want, I was just wondering, since we're talking about the fines and the stuff here, has anybody done anything about the seven wells that been pumping since two thousand nineteen? Have they been re-permitted on the test wells?
Director, that, that, it doesn't have anything to do with the, the topic at, at hand, which is whether we're going to pass the fee schedule or not. You already know that we haven't passed the rule because we've all been notified that we have had a public hearing to pass the rule that we voted to change last month and close thirty, and close it at thirty days on those test well permits. That rule has not been approved. Hadn't gone to public hearing, so no, that, that, nothing's been done there.
Public hearing been set? How are we supposed to find out this information if we don't ask the question?
That was already provided to you via email, Director.
Not on my email, because I looked at.
Okay.
Believe it or not, I did.
I'm just telling you where I got it from, Director. If you didn't get it in your email, I can't, I can't answer to that. Back to the topic at hand, is there any discussion about the fee schedule?
Janelle, you made the, the changes I recommended to you earlier today.
Yep, it, it needs to be.
Would you like to take a look at it?
No. It needs to say rule violation, civil penalties.
Civil, yeah.
Yeah.
I, I spoke to Janelle about this earlier today, so there's some disagreements among water law attorney across the state about the authority of groundwater conservation districts as administrative bodies to impose administrative penalties. Now, the Administrative Procedures.
I know where that came from.
Yeah, the Administrative Procedures Act does allow for administrative penalties, which allows an administrative board or to literally find somebody when they had, when there's been a violation. In that act, the administrative penalty procedure, about a page and a half, we have barely a paragraph in chapter thirty-six and that uses the term civil penalty. Now, some jurisdictions, a civil penalty or administrative penalty are kind of the same thing. I think in Texas jurisdiction, what was intended in chapter thirty-six is that a civil penalty is assigned by a district court judge versus an administrative penalty, which is assigned by an administrative body. But I think it's questionable whether or not this district has administrative penalty authority. Meaning you could vote, say, you are hereby fined this amount and if you don't pay, we'll sue you to collect that amount. Instead, we say, we will settle this violation for this amount. And if you refuse to settle, we're then going to sue you, we're going to sue you for up to twenty-five thousand dollars per day and we'll let a judge decide on what the amount is. Now, the other thing I changed this last session is, uh, in addition to the twenty-five thousand dollars a day, this provision that says if the entity profited from the violation, the judge can ramp that number even higher to make sure that it covers what was profit. So that there's nobody can profit and violate for the rules. But if you're instead of calling this a fine for, uh, or penalties, I think you should say civil penalties. So again, we follow that, it says.
Yeah.
And each place where it says fine of twenty-five thousand dollars or fine of five thousand, I, I think we just strike the fine of because we're not really finding anybody. We're, we're, we're doing two things here, we're, we're letting people know the amount we will settle for if there's a violation, so that they can do the math, their head and figure out that it's worth the risk or not. But it also gives the court some direction when we get to that point of what we think the civil penalty should be for these particular violations. That, that's the section of the law that says we can, a district can adopt a schedule. This is that schedule and it's meant to advise the judge on what the civil penalty should be. So I just don't, I'm, my recommendations here work, work fine and I'll tell you specifically Aqua Texas, which is part of a national corporation that's both a bunch of utilities all around the country, has sued the Hay Street District in, in federal court. And part of that lawsuit said that they were, you know, being dying their property rights and that the district had used these honors penalties and fines against them. When in fact, the district had offered to settle all their violations for that amount, not. And they were not going to renew, renew their permit as long as that, that violation was outstanding. So there's a, we're being extorted for all this money for the district and they have fined that for this amount of money. Well, the district, well, the district didn't do that in this question. Rather than have the fight important over whether they have that authority, we said, it's not a fine, it's a settlement offer. The court gets to decide with the fine, it's what the civil penalty.
What do we need to do?
I would, I would add the word civil before the word, um, penalty on the, on the heading. Everybody says fine of, just probably.
Penalty or just strike it?
So penalties fine, they should say civil, C-I-V-I-L.
No, I, I, I was talking about changing it from fine to penalty, just strike the language in front of it, just have the amount.
Just have the amount, okay. That's my recommendation.
Well, I would move that we, uh, make those changes. And accept it.
Greg, can you write in there what you think it should look like?
Yeah.
So on that copy that he's going to write on, it's what.
There's a pen right here. Yeah.
I, I made a motion. We'll need a second, but we'll let him, let him finish it, anyway, everybody can take a look at it. Very simple, David. Okay. I've made a motion to approve, there is no second at the moment.
Second.
All right, motion's been made and it's.
So something's going to have to be done with this thing.
Ah, lovely.
Do we have the whole time recorded? Take the quarter?
Probably ain't going to take. I remember the last time I bought a cassette. Okay, well, we'll hang up on this for a second.
How'd you know it wasn't recording to the beep?
I don't.
If you go look at it, go like, oh shit. It says memory pool.
All right.
They have to then go YouTube and pick everything up. It's, you still put that recording system up.
And we'll get backup right there.
Maybe we need two tape recorders. Let's check the other one. Uh, we just need to get the data cleared out of there. And, uh. I'm sure it has a little card, right?
Well.
No, you can just hook it to the computer and just take it off.
You have to adjust your, uh, your audio quality. Because you, you get like one hour or two hours worth of recording, or you can get twenty. And just knock it down to quality a little bit. You don't want it on high quality. It just eats up a bunch of memory.
Got you. I figured it had a little SIM card or something. Randy was laughing about earlier.
Yeah, there it is.
There it is.
The dinosaur.
Go ahead and say it, just like Janelle.
There's a whole bunch of us sitting around here.
If you said it right there, it'll pick up the voice, just set it right on top of that. It'll pick it up, you don't have to worry about it. That's the new one. That was the old one they had. It's recording already.
Oh, that's why you had the wrong one.
Yeah, Janelle.
Janelle, we've got.
It's fine.
We, we got, we keep it up here, so we keep an eye on it. Okay, we have a motion to approve the fee schedule as amended. Um, and a second, all, any, any further discussion on it? All those in favor, raise your right hand. All those opposed, same sign. Motion carries unanimously. Number eleven, discussion possible action changed time, date of regular board meeting. Director Mently, this is your item.
Okay.
What do you want to discuss?
Everybody that's sitting in this room knows Mr. Gaines had stated that he could only come to those meetings at a certain time. Everybody sitting in here knew that, but then again, y'all voted him off.
That's mischaracterized.
No, it's not, no, it's not. When a man states that he was voted in to be an imposition, and you change the meeting time for a hired employee, a paid employee, each and every one, the lawyer, y'all change them, but shoot the lawyer, he's a paid employee. This man was voting in by the people. I think that's an ethical violation, real bad, but I don't think there's anything we can do about it, but I want it to be stated and known that each one of y'all knew that when y'all voted on this. Each one of you.
I didn't know he was going to quit, so don't be making false accusations.
Well, he already said he couldn't attend the meeting.
One director, one director at a time.
I saw your face while you took the vote.
Are, are you, are you finished?
Is there anything we can do about this?
I'm just asking if you finish with your statements, so, so he can have the floor and he can speak.
Okay, you can.
And respond.
I want to hear the reasoning why y'all voted him off.
We didn't vote him off.
Whoa, 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 Director.
There are things that we can do to attend meetings. It's on the internet. They zoom in all the time. Have you ever zoomed? I do it all the time.
I wouldn't know what a zoom is.
Basically, you can get online, you can vote, we can see his face, we can see whatever.
That's not a good.
To sit here and say that we voted him off.
You did. Each one of y'all knew that he could not attend.
Director, you don't have a floor. Director, you don't have a floor right now. Director Ward has a floor.
If I had a conflicting thing, I would make it work. I have to move my schedule around to be here. You do too. It's part of being on a board. If you can't serve, you can't serve. If there was a board that met on Sunday mornings, they want to change the time Sunday mornings, I wouldn't attend because I had to go to church. I'd get off the board. It's the way it goes. I didn't know he was going to quit. None of us knew he was going to quit. Did, did, do y'all know? I had no idea. How did you know he was going to quit?
He'd already stated that he could not make it to the meeting.
We're not going to go there. We, we, everybody gets, hang on, just a second, Director. Everybody gets an opportunity to speak on the item once. Director Palmer, do you have anything on this item?
I don't have anything to add.
Director Shaw, do you have anything to add to this item? Director Blan.
My assumptions are the same as Director Ward. When you run for a position, it doesn't make a difference whether it's a city council, it doesn't make a difference whether it's commissioner's court, it doesn't make a difference, period. When you run for it, you accept the responsibilities of that board. And if that board makes a decision, unanimous decision to change times, then you need to adjust for it.
He has a floor, go interrupt him, please.
Nobody knew he was going to quit until he resigned, but that's beyond the point. I'm going to give you my personal deals. I'm not going to be switching back and forth just because somebody wants something that's above anybody else. We're here because every person here wants to be here. And I've stated this more than once, my job comes first. If Fort Clark Springs needs me, that's where I'm going to be. I will not be here. That's my choice. If I can't make it to every meeting, then I won't be on this board. That's my choice. When I ran for it, I knew what I was running for. I knew what I was doing. So to sit there and say, I've got a year's schedule, whatever, that's his position, that's him. That's him saying what he can and what he can't do, and that's his choice to resign. That was his choice. Nobody here made him do that. So we're going to get that clear right off the bat. There was no, you go back and look at the tape. He resigned after we decided that we weren't going to change the time of the meeting.
He stated in the.
Director.
That was, that was.
Let her finish.
It is a personal choice of his to do what he did. That's the bottom line to it.
The bottom line, maybe y'all. You don't have queries yet.
That's fine. As you, you're entitled to your opinion, just like everybody else here is. But I'm telling you right now, my job comes first, and just like his, he's saying his job comes first. That's it, that's what it is. Uh, we don't get paid for anything to be here. We're all volunteers, basically. And if you can't accept what's, uh, being dealt to you, you can sit there and laugh and giggle all you want. It doesn't change the facts of what the, what's going on.
Sure didn't. Changed the fact that y'all ethically voted him off.
There, there is no ethics to it.
Yeah, I noticed that.
There is nothing about.
Okay, uh, all right, that, that's no. I haven't spoken on this item. The child, the date and the time of the meeting was changed so we could have the attorney available, because this board expressed that interest, and it pursued it. And it changed the date and the time so the attorney could be available, so we could have him here. And Director Mently, you were one of the ones that wanted him at every meeting, if I remember correctly, all of last year, you made that statement, he needed to be at every meeting.
No, sir.
So.
I think.
It was changed.
Records on that.
And the governing body changed it. I didn't, Director Ward didn't, the governing body did. The governing body sought to have the attorney here, and they changed the date to do that. End of story. Director Gaines decided that he wanted to punch out. He didn't want to be here anymore. That's on him.
Then don't be pushing ethics on everybody in here if you're not going to follow the same ethic rules.
Uh, you're welcome to show me where I have violated the ethical rules. Because I haven't. The board changed the meeting date. I didn't. And that's the way it is. Do you have anything else? Do you have any motion on this item? No, I'm going to move on.
Just move on.
I do have something to add, Wes.
Please do.
There was an effort to put two meetings at seven thirty AM, and there was some, you know, uh, pushback on that, and, you know, we were all asked if we could make it or not. We all answered, you know, in our own way. But the reason that I was told when I asked why were we going to have a seven thirty meeting was because the budget had to be passed, and there was deadlines. We have to have the meeting Friday to get the budget passed, and then I don't know why it changed, whatever, I didn't hear, but it changed to Monday at seven thirty. And then I got an email that there wasn't a quorum, so both of those seven thirty meetings, the premise was that the budget had to be passed. But if that was true, it didn't happen on those days, and it was passed today, and I imagine we're still fine.
Director, I don't see how that pertains to anything with a.
So, talking about time and date of regular meeting, I think.
That wouldn't have.
A regular meeting. To make those seven thirty meetings, to do that meeting was, um, odd. So that's just my comment.
Okay, anything else?
Wes, I, I want to comment.
Go ahead.
We did this so we could have our attorney here. We didn't do it to fire Charlie Gaines. Nobody fired Charlie Gaines. I want to make that clear. That's my stand. We did not fire him.
He also said he could come on video itself, just like you're saying that, that we.
And what else did we say, or did they say? Zoom didn't work real good, and it wasn't reliable. And why do we have to have an attorney, Mr. Mently? Because we are always contentious. This board has been contentious for a long time. We need his advice. And that for myself, I want him here, because we have questions, just like tonight.
Want to beat this?
But nobody fired Charlie Gaines.
We're going to beat this dead horse anymore? We're going to move along?
No, I'm through.
Item twelve, discussion possible action letter of engagement, Eddie and company. Entertaining, may I see it approved?
Make a motion.
Motion by Director. Motion by Director Shaw, approved. Do we have a second?
I bet.
Second by Director Ward, need discussion. All those in favor, raise your right hand. All those opposed, same sign. Motion carries unanimously. Number thirteen, discussion possible action drought plan. Director Palmer, this is your item.
Thank you. Uh, last meeting, there was a vote made to forward, uh, basically two uh, products, something that Director Gaines, before he left, provided about his thoughts on drought plan, and then, uh, your other potential, uh, drought plan that was submitted when the original, say, the original, the committee of myself, and, uh, Director Gaines and Director Barry. So that was, uh, voted on last month to give to Mr. Ellis, and I don't, I just checked on the status of it, I guess, Mr. Ellis, uh, you were. Well, I think we do, because I think we need to talk about the, uh, legal opinion on it. Or if it's not out yet, then we'll get it later.
Okay.
Do we have a legal opinion on it yet?
Well, I mean, I've, I've reviewed the, the plan, and it is absolutely legally sufficient. I mean, I think that you have the authority to adopt this drought plan the way that it's drafted, and enforce this plan the way it's drafted. Uh, I cannot give you an opinion as to whether or not it is effective.
No, well, that would be, you know, what I would be asking you. I'd just ask you for legal, uh, feedback, if there's something you recommend in there that should be struck or added, or uh, blatantly against the law, or otherwise, you know.
There's some things that I would work differently, but that's, you know, that may be more style grammar over.
Okay.
Um, the one thing I would caution is, and, and this is true of drought procurement, or issuing permits, or, or doing a management plan, or, or anything that you do. The more science we have behind it, justified, the stronger it is going to be, and, and able to depend if we ever end up for.
Sure.
So, you know, the, and I don't do the science, I just do the legal part.
Okay, but as far as what you saw, you didn't notice any legally, uh, obvious issues. Okay.
Does Mr. Vince need to look at this ground plan? Have you got a chance to look at it?
Reviewed it. This is the same one that was circulated at the.
Yeah.
Yeah.
So, so I guess what I would propose is that we, as a board, uh, talk about whether we concur to send it to, uh, Freeze Nichols for their hydrologic, uh, you know, short answer on it. I mean, obviously, I know that it's not in your, uh, timeframe right now to do that, but, uh, you know, I don't see any harm in you looking at it and giving initial feedback on. So I think, I think it's overdue. I think it's time to start getting some opinions on it. I think that we have enough science for, uh, our new hydrogeologists to, uh, give an initial opinion on it. So I guess I'll move that we forward those same two drought plans that we forwarded for legal opinion to, uh, our new Freeze Nichols and Mr. Claus for his hydrological opinion. So that would be my.
I've got some questions up for Jim.
Go ahead.
Rick and.
Well, motion's been made, just send the two proposed drought plans to Freeze Nichols.
So.
Discussion's open.
Yeah, to deal with this drought, and so when you're looking at the Edward and the map of the Edward, how much of the Edwards is in Kenny County?
You buy a credit, I get a tiny portion, yeah.
Yeah, so Fort Clark and City of Brackville gets their water from the Edwards, right?
I understand.
Okay, how does, uh, Uvalde County and the other counties deal with the Edwards, since they are basically have portions in their own county? As far as drought contingency plans.
Does they don't because of the, uh?
Yeah, well, the EAA, so it was, if the EA goes into drought condition, does anything outside of the EA get affected by their rules, or is that, uh, affected only by groundwater districts with their? Anything outside of the Edwards Aquifer?
Defer to the attorney office.
So in Uvalde County, when they go into a drought contingency plan for the Edwards Aquifer Authority.
Right.
Does that affect anybody that's not pumping Edwards water?
No. The Edwards Aquifer Authority only has jurisdiction over the Edwards Aquifer. They has no jurisdiction whatsoever over Austin Chalk, Leon Ravel, or any other formation in any of their eight counties.
Okay, so with that being said, on these wells that we're monitoring, what's relevant to this spring? What is relevant to Edwards Aquifer water?
That's a million dollar question.
Which well? So, so what I'm saying is this, what I'm saying is this, is if we're going to come in here and do a drought contingency plan, it should be no different than what it is with these other counties dealing with the same problem.
Director Blan, if I knew what wells were directly influencing that spring, I would say something besides that you've got.
Oh, but how do they do it in, in the Edwards? If you, if you're pumping Edwards water, they're going to classify you as you're under the Edwards drought contingency plan, right?
Well, the Edwards Aquifer, that's, the Edwards Aquifer goes beyond the EAA's authority. EAA.
That's not, that's not what I'm saying. So under the EAA, when they come in there, do the drought contingency, if you're not drawing from the Edwards Aquifer, then it doesn't, doesn't affect you. So why would we affect everybody else that's outside of the Edwards? That's the point.
It's a good point.
The other deal is this, so when you're talking about the total amount of water in Kenny County, is it the total amount of everything? The Edwards Trinity, the Edwards, everything? Or is it just the Edwards? What is the total amount that we're talking in? So back in here is what, sixty nine thousand acre feet? But of what? Aquifer.
They don't, they don't delineate it that way.
So that, that's the, if, if the Edwards separated it, and you're not, you're not being, uh, forced to do anything under the Edwards because you're not pumping Edwards water, then how does that number, uh, irrelevant to anything? It's not. It's the same thing here, is what the spring, the spring water is all Edwards water. So the people in this county. So the people in this county that are in Edwards, if you were gonna put a drought contingency plan, it would be them, those people that would be affected. Why would you affect anybody else? Is it, I'm asking a.
That's a good question.
It's a good question. Excuse me. The crowd's not, the crowd's not on.
So before, before, before we sit down and we look at this, these questions need to be answered.
Well, now, can I speak on that a little bit?
Is, is anybody else?
I would like to say something.
Please do. Everybody gets an opportunity to speak once.
The drought itself is gonna be, if they can say the whole county's in drought, then the whole county's in the drought. It doesn't have barriers on where the aquifer is at. Correct? Okay, whenever it's a drought in our area, it's a drought in our area. No matter where you get your water from, we're in the drought, whether it's Edwards or whatever. It's all drought.
That's not what we're talking about. We're talking directly about what affects the spring. When you're in a drought, it's gonna affect everything because you're in a drought.
It's affecting everybody.
But that doesn't mean that. No, but we're only talking about some source of water to that spring.
Let me, can I step in there, Matt, to clarify, hopefully clarify it for all of us a little bit? And obviously, this is my opinion and the final opinion is gonna defer to our professional consultants, right? That's what we're about to vote to spend a significant amount.
We don't have a second yet.
Money. So I understand, but our job, our duty to this county is to properly manage this water and it doesn't matter if it's the Edwards Aquifer or it's the Austin Chalk or a mix. We have to manage all the water in this county uh for the, considering the needs of everybody. That's the short answer. So a drought plan is an attempt to properly do that. And the science, the science to do that, well, let me.
Hang on, no cross talking over each other.
Just a second, Matt. So the science to do that is co- is gonna constantly evolve. When this groundwater district was formed, there was hardly anything. Now there's significant amount of information that, you know, I don't envy anybody to try to concurly what it all means. That's, you know, beyond my knowledge, but uh, that science is gonna constantly evolve. And so the answer that we have to wait for some level of evolution, just like, you know, that's in my mind uh not the right answer. We need to make some decisions now. This board needs to start doing more than they've done in the past. I think people uh wanna see some action and will there be mistakes in that action? I imagine there will be. There's not, is, there're gonna be mistakes in Mr. Claus's uh recommendations. I'm gonna say there probably will be. Because it's not a perfect science. It's not, you know, H two O equals water. So we need to start making some decisions on what we know now. And if we could ask Mr. Claus with what he knows now to, you know, make a little call on this plan, I think that's the smart thing to do. And then we, and it's not even close to being public hearing, voted on, doing anything. We're just asking for some progress.
We're repeating and repeating.
So I have my, so I have my motion. That's what it is. I think we should.
Hang on, just a second, Director.
Alright.
Everybody gets an opportunity to speak on this before everybody gets to start talking twice on it. Director Shaw, do you have anything to say about that?
Well, our Vincent, they gave us the plan or schedule of what we're gonna accomplish, tried to accomplish.
We hadn't got the agenda item, but we're, we're gonna get to that.
I've just, it's tying into this drought plan. Drop, this drought plan would come up next year sometime. That's all I have.
Director Ward?
I'm under the same impression. On the schedule, it says he's gonna be doing all of this geological work. And we're gonna start restricting and we don't even have the geological science yet.
That's what I'm talking about.
Personally, I don't believe that we have the information or to do this at this point. We know that there are problems with the zones and we know that we've got D F Cs that look like they're on the wrong G M As. And we're trying to do a drought management plan and a blanket deal. Uh, I don't think it's advisable at this time. That's my opinion on the matter. There's a motion on the floor. Is there a second?
Second vote.
There's a motion by Director Palmer. And a second, uh I'm, I'm gonna tell you. And a second by Director Manley to forward the two proposed drought management plans to Freeze Nichols for review. Hydrological uh uh for review of the hydrological assessment. All those in favor, raise your right hand. All those, sir?
I got questions about.
Nope. Alright, hang on. We're not gonna call the vote if you got questions.
Oh, is this gonna, uh, how is this trying to do this now gonna interfere with something that you're gonna do later? How much money are we spending on uh this deal here? Then later we're gonna spend how much money?
So I've already taken a good look at this. Um, part of the initial on-call services agreement provided some left in the budget there to answer questions such as this. Um, I think going back to the, the comment that Greg made about whether or not this is effective, that's what I'll be looking at. Um, through that lens, um, that's where some of my concerns have been. Um, going back to the comment you just made about the zones, my understanding is those zones are preliminary. So will this type of plan work? I think it could, but with the way the zones currently are designated and are very limited understanding of the aquifer systems in terms of how water flows through those systems, how wells are connected to different zones within those aquifer systems, how pumping in one area may have a stronger impact than another area. Um, I printed this out. This is the report that Greg referenced last month, uh what Ace Trinity did as it related to their management zones. It's a sixty-page report. Um, it's about twenty years worth of research that they were able to pile together in that. Um, but ultimately, at the end of the day, that's where we're trying to move. And I think in terms of thinking about this through that lens of effectiveness, um, that's where I'm gonna come up pretty short, just based on what I've already looked at, just but.
Yeah.
As it relates to the question you asked, um, I could do that based on that initial task authorization we've already uh agreed to two meetings ago, um, in terms of where this fits into, um, whether or not it detracts and becomes a distraction from anything here. I would hope not. Um, and when I say here, that's what I've provided to you in terms of the timeline over the next year here. Um, but just some of those general thoughts that I would, I think, put down on paper is what I've just shared with you just now.
Alright, um, I'm just gonna reiterate what I said the first time. I am, uh nobody else bring up anything about a drought contingency plan until the deal with the springs came up. That is the relevant deal. No farmer, no rancher, nobody. So that's what I'm going off of. And there's always been, there's already established, the E A A has already established, these other counties have already established the way that they're dealing with that. So they specifically know uh who they're gonna uh go after if they're pumping a certain water source. So when you, when you, uh, how is their water over there or the way they deal with their problems any different than we're dealing with ours? There is none. So if you can't say that, oh, this person over here is pumping sulfur water and it affects this over here. No, it doesn't. So I want, I want all that looked at because I don't feel uh not even near comfortable with telling somebody that they've got to go into a drought contingency plan when they have nothing to do with the area that we're trying to focus on. That's where I'm coming from. So if y'all need to talk to the E A A and try to figure all this out, that's fine. But the, all these questions before you do a drought contingency plan, all that stuff needs to be answered. Uh, so I would ask you that you need to uh really delve into that and look at that and see what, what, what you're gonna come up with. So that's all I gotta say.
Any further discussion?
I'd like to say that if, if we don't getting something on the books that's been twenty-two years, if we get something on the books, they can always be revised. I mean, as the technology comes in, it can be changed, correct? Is there any problem with changing it once we have one established? Since, ever since it's comes out, there's no change in it? Is that what the problem's supposed to be?
It's a policy decision.
Anything else?
Well, I didn't get an answer to that.
Yes, you did.
No, he said it was a policy deal. It's up to us to decide.
And that was your answer? Is there anything further, any further discussion?
Not an answer.
Well, that's your opinion. All those in favor, uh, the motion was to send the two proposed drought lines to Freeze Nichols for ideological assessment and review. All those in favor, raise your right hand. All those opposed, same sign. Three, three, motion does not carry. Number fourteen, discussion possible action bylaws amendments. We have two. We have the ones that were submitted by Mr. Ellis last month and a subsequent one that was submitted by Director Palmer. That's a pleasure of the board.
I move to accept the bylaw amendments as printed.
Which one?
Both of them, all of them.
We're gonna do them separately.
It's not my motion.
I don't think we can do them together. Mr. Ellis.
I think it's okay to make a motion to, to accept uh all the proposed amendments. It would be subject to a motion to divide the question, but uh yeah, I think you can do a single motion to do all of them.
I'll move to divide the question.
Prefer your motion.
His motion, I haven't had a second yet.
Fair enough. Are you second again?
Yes, sir.
I'm moving to separate the question. Do I have a second?
I think we need a vote on the motion on the floor, don't we?
No, this, this is a subsequent motion. It's a procedural motion affecting your motion. When you divide the question, you're saying, I'm gonna take this in two separate parts. You're held any part.
I'm good.
We're not gonna do them together. That's what I'm saying. I'm trying to separate them. Do I have a second to separate these into two, two actions?
Second.
We have a motion and a second to divide the question. All those in favor, raise your right hand. Those opposed, same sign. Motion carries. Now, I move that we accept the bylaws submitted by Mr. Ellis last month. You have a second. Have a motion and a second to accept the bylaws for changes, amendments provided by Mr. Ellis last month. Is there any discussion? All those in favor, raise your right hand. All those opposed, same sign. Motion carries unanimously. Now, we have the amendment provided by Director Palmer, removal of officers. What's the board's pleasure?
I move to accept one point six removal of offered officer service as written.
The original motion was to de-vote. You dealt with the first part, now we need to deal with the second part. So there's been a motion, second on that.
Alright, I already got the motion and the second. Alright, no, we separated it.
There, there's a motion, second to do it off. It sounds good.
You got the motion adopted already. So let me write that down. Is there any discussion?
Yeah, real quick, uh Charlie Gaines, before he decided to uh end his term, thought this would be a good idea. Uh Greg, you said that there was a process that had to happen to do that, in accordance with the rules. So there's been effort to add something to our bylaws, uh, cause our bylaws obviously need some reworking and regarding this issue, there's no uh way that if any thing happens when a uh officer of the board uh no longer meets the whatever, approval of the majority of the board to be removed before a year's term uh expires. So this is an effort. Mr. Gaines kind of started. I agree with it. I don't know what everybody else thinks, but I think that's smart to have this. This doesn't mean that the vote's gonna happen to do this, but this um option, if the conditions exist, if this is required, would allow uh the board, majority of the board to take this action. And I think it's appropriate to have it in our bylaws. I think uh it would be smart to add this. So I think it's met the requirements. This, everybody has this in writing, you know, the required amount of time and I think we need to pass this one point six.
Yeah, yeah. Anybody else have any comment?
Yeah, Greg, on, on this particular, does anybody else do this? That you know of?
I'm not aware of any other G C, I don't, I obviously don't, I don't really know, but ones I that are representing, I don't know of any other G C D that, that has officer elections at any board meeting. Um, I believe all of them in the bylaws say that there's, their officer elections are either every year or every other year following a director election.
So Greg, just to clarify, you're saying that no other board has provisions in their bylaws that if the officer in the opinion of the board isn't meeting the requirements anymore, that they can't vote them off?
I'm, I'm, I'm not, uh, I haven't reviewed all of them carefully to make sure that's the case, but I'm not aware off the top of my head of any other district that does that. You know, there may be some that have something where well, I, I think you have an officer election if a board member is removed from the board and therefore loses their officer position.
They resign.
The board being able to vote to remove that officer.
Well, they resign their position because as a, as an officer, they would be able to like them.
If they're, if they're, you know. An outside action can remove a board member.
Right.
You know, so.
But I think, you know.
Board member, then they can't be an officer.
Right. Didn't you say before, maybe I misheard you, but board officers serve at the pleasure of the board. If the board decides that they don't meet that pleasure anymore, then they could be voted off. Is that not accurate?
No, no, my, what I, what I said at the time is that if the bylaws say that the board, that the officer serves the pleasure of the board, then they can be replaced at any time. If the bylaws say it serves for a specific term, they, then they cannot be removed.
Okay, and I think, yeah, so, okay, and this would, this would change what our bylaws say to say that they serve at the pleasure of the board. That's all it says.
That's, that's what the post-basal would make serve the place of the board. That's right.
It'd be easier to just say that they serve the pleasure of the board and not give them a term. Anyway, anything else? Any further discussion? Motion has been made and seconded to approve section one point six removal of officers. All those in favor, raise your right hand. All those opposed, same sign. Motion does not carry. Number fifteen, discussion possible action uh men twenty twenty-four, twenty twenty-five budget to transfer funds between lineups. Anything we need to know about this one specifically? This looks like standard stuff to me. Mr. Now, anything we need to know about the present amendment?
No, I thought it was. I really don't have anything else to add to it. It's just.
Just making sure. What's the board's pleasure?
I'll make the motion.
Motion has been made, Director Plan to amend.
Second.
Seconded by Director Shot. Any discussions? Any discussion? All those in favor, raise your right hand. All those opposed, same sign. Motion carries unanimously.
I think it pretty much is plan authority.
I thought it was. I just thought I would ask if there's anything specific that we might need to know. I, I tracked it, but you never know. Item number sixteen, discussion possible action, Trump's agreement with Freeze and Nichols. We finally got there.
Well, good evening. The hope is that everyone's had time to at least glance at this, hopefully read through it more thoroughly than, than just a glance. Once again, try to be very thoughtful and a layered approach where we're building upon one task and using that momentum carrying through into the next task. I do want to point out off the bat, all these proposed costs are not to exceed costs. The one that is currently, in my opinion, probably going to come in quite a bit under, or the hope is that it comes quite a bit under is task two. This currently has the assumption that I'll need to attend eight GMA meetings. That's assuming they're all in Sonora. If they're out at the middle Pecos Groundwater Conservation District, there's a live link for that. I don't have to travel. If there are other places around the state, there's a chance I don't have to travel. So there is quite a bit built into that one there as it relates to travel time, which also accounts for mileage. So that one I, I think could substantially come down depending on where those GMA meetings are, how many GMA meetings I'm asked to attend. So I did want to point that off, point that out off the bat here. But sticking to the, the schedule that I provided in the memorandum of last month was, was the main goal and main intent here. Last month, that was just very high level. These are some recommendations. This here provides a little bit more detail on all those recommendations with associated start and end dates, that associated B structure. I'd be more than happy to answer any questions before we get to that point, though. I do want to point out task four is kind of the meat and potatoes. I've heard a lot of great conversation tonight. I've heard a lot of really good questions asked. A lot of those questions, in my opinion, we're putting the cart before the horse a little bit here where I, I think there are a lot of good ideas. I, I think there are a lot of good questions, but there's still a lot of data to analyze, a lot of numbers to crunch. There's a lot to think through. Once again, going back to developing effective and meaningful policy, I think with sound science, we can get there. The literature I've reviewed, I've reviewed every available report that I've got my hands on. This goes back to the URS report, EAA reports, the USGS report. There's still quite a few data gaps in there. And so my goal through task four is to help fill in, fill in those data gaps, create science that's specifically tailored to Kenny County. That's going to be the most significant effort on this in that planning for up to a week in the field as well as part of that one there. Maybe we don't spend as much time in the field. We spend it a little bit elsewhere. Some of those ideas I add in terms of where I'd like to spend some time in the field. Continuing to, to go around with, with Jim, better understand the lay of the land, go take a look at the recharge features out to the northeast here. Really try to better understand the system, not just through aerial maps and through computer systems, but actually boots on the ground. So I, I know.
When you walk in.
It is, it's very different. Things are a bit larger. And the, the, the thought there is we're not going to get all the way here, but we can start filling in some of the data points that are needed to get there. Once again, that is what they use to develop a groundwater management zone for Jacob Well in Pace County. A lot of science was put into that, creating water level surfaces that show which aquifers, which wells are connected. Those are things that we'll be doing as part of this past authorization here, taking a look at all the structure in a little bit more detail. There's some new data points where I'd like to update that previous geologic structure that we've done with some of those new data points. But really make sure that when questions like the conversations and questions that have been asked tonight do arise, we're able to provide some better clarity, some answers that are aligned with actual, actual data. I, I know there's a lot of anecdotal data. There's a lot of great charts that, that Jim put together that kind of shows some of these correlations, but I think we can get to the point to where we have some certainty behind what those charts, what those anecdotal observations are and ultimately, I think we will be heading is, is in a place where we can end up with something like that. But that was the very long-winded introduction there. I know I said I would circle back around to questions that anyone has as it relates to any of the tasks, be more than happy to address any of those.
What about payment schedule?
So monthly invoicing kind of, once time is billed to a project, there would then be a monthly invoice associated with it. I believe that's the structure that was in the initial master service agreement, and maybe there was some language in there about flexibility to that. But, but that's typically how, how we invoice on these things. So until a project started, there wouldn't be an invoice for that task. So for example, task four, that doesn't start until January 1st. So you wouldn't receive an invoice for that one before February 15th or so at the end of that January month.
The only thing worries me about that is I don't want to pay, I don't want the groundwater district to be out over half the money and not have a, anything in our hands.
Right.
And I guess once Janelle signs this, it's a legal binding contract on both parties, right?
I believe so.
Great. So I don't know how we could do that on the invoice. I don't know how everybody else feels about that, but maybe I'm just being tough on that part with you.
Well, you agree to the amount.
Maybe if we got like a, a schedule of what you've completed on the invoice, this is where we're at.
Well, and.
This is where we're at the contract.
And one thing is that, that is relevant to that, that question. We do provide monthly kind of project update reports. The first one that I've provided is very limited. Have y'all received an invoice yet? Okay, well, you will receive an invoice. There'll be some bullet points of, of things we've done, meetings I've attended. Some, some of those key conversations I've had, things that we have worked on over the prior billing cycle there. So you will be receiving that. I do plan to continue to attend meetings. At those meetings, I could come with a kind of a monthly report, if that's something that you're interested in receiving. These are the things we've looked at. This is where we're going. These are some of those roadblocks we've hit along the way, but making sure that we're being fully transparent with what we're doing on our side is something that I was already planning to do. So.
So like January 1st on the largest contract that we have here. You have a startup fee on that? Do you know how that works? Is it in that?
So what would end up happening is our billing cycle is going to close, say, January 28th. That goes into our accounting group. About two weeks later, they would send over an invoice to Janelle. With that invoice, there would be a one pager that outlines everything that we've done. You could also see the invoice detail in terms of hours that were billed to the project, what those hours look like. But it's that one pager that provides you kind of all that background information. And once again, I plan to attend the meetings and provide those monthly updates in person as well.
Thank you.
What's board's pleasure?
I've got one question. So I'm looking at this contract. So easy, what I'm used to looking at contracts, usually at the end of this, there's somewhere in this thing. There's going to be a you don't like working for us, so I'm just going to bail out or the other way around.
We, we tried to simplify things, which is why we started with the master service agreement, which I, I believe is, is probably where you're looking.
That's where your clauses are at.
And looking for. I, I believe Greg reviewed that on behalf of the district, so.
Everything looks fine. That's where your scape clauses are at.
Pardon me, is the word.
No, that, that answers the question. It's great. Trust our attorney. So I'm fine with that.
What's the board's pleasure? Any further questions? Any motions?
I move that we approve our service agreement with Freeze and Nichols.
I'll second that motion. Any further discussion? Motion has been made and seconded to approve the service agreement with Freeze Nichols. All those in favor, raise your right hand. All those opposed, same sign. Motion carries unanimously. Agenda item seventeen, I am moving that down to before adjournment. As a 30-year endowed member of Lost Wars for Sonic Lodge, I have a slight conflict of interest and I will be exited the building when y'all figure that one out, just like I did when the lodge discussed it. Wouldn't there then either? I want any part of it. So I'm going to move that one down. Number eighteen, discussion possible action, general manager's evaluation.
That's yours, Wes. I think you collected all the evaluations.
No, there's still two out. You asked what on the agenda, Director.
Okay. So I'll, I'll address it. I guess in discussions with Greg Ellis, general manager evaluations that we've all received those forms, that's my hope that those would be returned to our board president as soon as possible. I don't really know reason why they haven't been, but they should be. And once they are, then we can you know, decide based on those and based on our discussions relative to those reports, what we need to do going into the future as we, you know, move into the future with this groundwater district. So I don't need names, I guess. I'll leave it at that, but if you haven't turned it in, turn it in for crying out loud. That's all I got.
Anybody else? Okey dokey.
We have names. Turn it in, Wes, or we haven't.
I'm not going to give you names in a public meeting.
I'll find out later this week.
It'll be fine. Number nineteen, discussion possible action, financial statements for August 2025.
Let's go through this really quick. Total income, $668,743.43. Total expenses, $433,666.77. Net profit loss, $235,033.65. Everly rule of taxes receivable, $1,761.7. Expenses payable, $4,285.59. Net, negative $5,524.52. Accounts receivable, $16,433.67. General fund, $20,893.84. Money market, $261,069.88. Petty cash, $351.72. Well, log deposit, $4,300. Tax full, $833,313.87. For CB, $135,179.19. And number two, CD, $256,944.48. What is the deal with the net? What's up with the net?
We have more expenses than we had revenue coming this month.
Particular amount, this was all the revenue was.
We only got $861 in, in taxes. But we had $4,285 worth of.
That answers that question. Right. That's all I had. That's a motion, right?
You know, I don't know. We've got this on discussing possible action for financial statements. Greg, do we, we don't take action on it. Don't we just review those? Is that, do we have a clerical around here or what?
It's always been like that.
Those are my clients will, will move to accept the financial statements that was added, but I mean, they are what they are.
Yeah, exactly. That, that's, well, we've got it down as discussion possible action, so I didn't intend a motion.
Make a motion to accept it.
Motion's been made to accept financial statements. Do we have a second?
Second.
So it's okay, Greg, if we don't, if it's not an action, action item?
As long as, as long as it's been reflected, that
That they're recorded. All those in favor, raise your right hand. Motion domain seconded. All those opposed, same sign. Six oh. Motion true. Review monthly investment report. Agenda item number twenty. Director Ward, I think that's you.
Think that last meeting we voted and moved some money around, right, Janelle?
Yeah.
I was looking back at my notes. I guess all that wants to move.
I have not.
Okay.
We were having some larger things come in and I didn't want to have to put it in and two, two weeks later have to move money out from tax booth. So we'll, it's right after the first of October, we'll get that.
That'll be the start of the new budget year anyway, so.
You have any questions on the
No.
Investment report? All right, moving on. Twenty-one, discussion possible action, invoices received and invoices paid.
Nobody's got any questions. I'll make a motion to accept.
Motion's been, uh, well, would be to accept. It would be actually to pay them, I did, I believe. Motion's been made to accept invoices received and invoices paid. Is there a second? Motion's been made by Director Plan, seconded by Director Shot, accept invoices received and invoices paid. All those in favor, is there any discussion? All those in favor, raise your right hand. All those opposed, same sign. Motion carries. Uh, number twenty-two, which is review the Texas Water and Volmord drought index and monitoring data. You don't need to do, because we've already talked to Mr. Burton. Start moving that around. I like that after the general manager. I don't like waiting till the end to find that out. Number twenty-three, director requests for items on next to future agendas.
Yeah, I got one, Wes, on that. Just to confirm the, the test well business, the update on that rule, we're going to have a public meeting that's announced 20 days prior. I got an email that said that would happen October 31st.
I believe the hearing, I believe the email said that the earliest we could have it would be October 31st. And I have no problem setting it on the 31st. If you want to do it on Halloween, it's fine by me. I don't care.
We could do that on Monday, whenever.
Well, everybody wants that closed up, so.
Do it in conjunction with the next regular meeting at the latest, so that's whatever that date is.
Well, we can't do it at the, well, we can't because it's before the 31st. The next regular meeting is before October 31st.
So why couldn't it be done by the, at the next meeting? It's a 20-day notice.
I don't know. All I know is what I read in the email, and I thought the email said October 31st.
Is there a reason for that or?
Well, 20.
20 days.
We have, we have to get the notice in the paper next Monday. It will be Thursday before the paper comes out. And with the three days, you know, you don't count, you don't count weekends anymore. You don't count holidays. So that would be the earliest that we could have it. If you look at it for the 20.
I'm not looking, I'm not, I don't have my phone in here. I left it in the car. I'm not looking, I'm not, I don't have my phone in here. I left it in the car, uh, so I have a calendar in front of me.
I'm sorry, Janelle, which?
We're trying to figure out the earliest that we could have the public hearing for the rule to, to, to to close up the loophole on the test well permits where after the end of the year, they got thirty days to come in and apply.
But the, the thing, the only thing that changed this last session is on the open meetings act, it now requires three business days notice between posting and having a meeting. Which kind of turns into a five day notice.
Right.
It didn't change the public hearing department. So that's twenty calendar days of business days.
Ah, okay. So that, so we can do that in October meeting.
We, well, that's when the paper comes out.
Yeah, let's figure that out. Let, let, let.
Paper comes out, it's fine.
Get your phone, get your phone. Let's look at it together. Oh, well, I agree. Um, I, we actually agree on something.
Alright.
Hey, it happened.
So, um.
Does the paper come out on the first of October?
It comes out every Thursday.
Anytime after the twenty second.
Oh, but we have to, well, hang on now. We gotta send it to the paper.
We have to send it to the paper by Monday.
Monday. Before that Thursday, okay, so.
Before that Thursday for it to be posted that.
That'd be the second.
Right.
Thursday.
Okay, so then if we go the second, then we give, we could go to the regular meeting because it's, when, when is the regular meeting? It's, it's gonna be probably twenty.
Second, twenty third?
Twenty third?
Wait, wait, no, we're on Tuesday.
It's on twenty first. Is it fourth?
Yeah.
Okay.
So that would be, that would work.
There we go. So. So it's not an agenda item per se, but we'll have a public hearing for the meeting.
Right.
Twenty eight.
On the twenty eighth.
Right, and then it's gonna be on the agenda to vote on it.
I don't have any, as long, as long as we've had this one, I think, I think, I think we're good to go. I don't think, I don't think we're gonna get a public account, public comment against it, so.
Alright, so if we can make that happen, that's what I would like to see next.
Absolutely, I'm riding in.
I will get you a document you can put up on the website, in addition to the, the notice.
Would you say that's twenty eight, October twenty eight?
That's a rule change.
And it'll be at like five, thirty or five.
Well, let's, let's, can we just do the public hearing at six with the meeting to follow?
Yes.
Yeah, let's just do it that way. That way we don't change the time. They don't have to worry about being here thirty minutes earlier or anything like that. The same time as always.
They can make it at six here.
Same thing, you know, don't change nothing.
So that's ready for the next board meeting.
Okay. Uh, you're making that in form of a motion and I'm seconding it. Any further discussion on it? All those in favor, raise your right hand. All those opposed, same sign. Six oh. Alright. Now. You have agenda item seventeen, Director Ward.
I'm adding you the gavel. And I'm gonna tell you what my brother sister told me. Good luck. Good night. Hang on a minute.
I was gonna say you left all your stuff.
Got my keys and I ain't leaving without my glass.
Wes, you're out. We're gonna adjourn without you after this.
Y'all can do whatever y'all want to do without, after me, because I'm, I'm going home.
That's fine.
As I said, I would not be in the building when they were discussing. Good night.
Good to see you. Yeah, but that's cool. Yeah, I'll talk to you later. Thanks for being here.
See you. Appreciate you. Have a good night.
Thank you. We'll be in touch.
Alright. Item seventeen, discussion of possible action lease agreement with Lost Morse Masonic Lodge. Um, I know that Janelle probably has a little bit more info on this than me. Um, we rent this building from the Masonic Lodge. They have their meetings upstairs. We don't own this building. Uh, for those of you that may not have been around for that before, um, but it's always been pretty straightforward on the lease. I don't think that we've ever even had to address in a meeting, have we? Right?
Never. It's, it's the first, when we first leased it, we leased it, it was like it was five year lease, but the first year they gave us, let's get, three hundred dollars a month. And then it went to four hundred dollars a month, that's the first year for five years. And then subsequent to that, then they went to the five hundred dollars a month. And so we were six thousand a year. So this is first, this is really the.
Okay, so in your, in years.
Five year lease agreement and yeah.
So in the years past, it was six thousand dollars per year. And what did it go up to now?
Up to five thousand a month, two thousand, so doubled.
And next is building here. That's his building here. Yes, sir.
So, yeah, so there's a hundred percent increase?
Yes. That's what we're talking about.
And just another question I got then. This gets better every item agenda. The Masons own it. Wes doesn't own it. It's owned by the Masons.
The Masonic Lodge.
Yeah, they own it as a.
They meet upstairs.
Okay.
Their lodge is upstairs, because they own the whole building.
Yes, I expressed maybe that we would go monthly with them for a year. Uh, and maybe not get into a long term lease and see if we could find something different. Uh, I feel like with the crowds that we've been having, maybe we need to kind of expand out a little bit. Maybe look into maybe building something. I, I don't know, but um, I know that uh, usually in years, Pat, and any leases I've been in, it's usually, you know, ten percent, twenty percent increase. You know, and uh, like you said a minute ago, Director Farmer doubled. And so, and that's okay, but um, I don't know what y'all's feeling is on it, but I hate to get into another five year lease. And then something else come up. And maybe that's cheaper and I'm not sure, so I, I don't know.
I thought, I thought that was a little much.
My brother, uh, this is, I'm just gonna lay this out there so y'all can figure this out, but I think it would behoove us to have our own property. Uh, without making any uh, rental to anybody. What I would like to see is a, uh, do a one year lease and in the meantime, trying to find property. And put a building on it and it tires. That's what I would do, so.
We need to change this sixty months to twelve months.
Well, you don't actually have to. If you want to do it on a monthly deal, it's fine, but I would during a year period of time, I would, I would definitely try to find a place and uh, try to get uh, an architect to try to draw up whatever you wanted, or a good sized building like uh, Slater Hall would be uh, the ideal sized building for that.
Work perfect whenever we had that.
Yeah, three or four lots. Uh, and try to get some property, but uh.
I've been around and looked and there, there's just not a whole lot to.
Would be nice to get everybody an office, you know, a little, a little wall at least. That way they're not out here in the middle of everything.
Cubby hole.
Something, you know.
Yeah, so Blake with the, I mean, you're, you got the gavel, but there needs to be a motion to accept this lease agreement as written or just nothing, right? It's not like you're gonna change all the deal and do it again right now. I don't know, do we just move to either do this or don't do this and then go, you know, plan B? How, how did, you know, I, I would say, I mean, personally, I'm not in favor of approving this for that amount of time, for that amount of money, doubling the rent for that, you know, that long, five years. I mean, I'm, I'm opposed to that, and I think getting a new place would be something to definitely look into, so you know, I wouldn't vote to approve this right now. That's just me, but.
You know, what's the current lease saying?
Sir?
What does the current lease say? That's, that, that it's now up, right? So what does it say about continuing month to month after? Do you remember?
Yeah, I don't have to probably that's.
Most, most leases say continue month to month, which means they can set for that, whatever they want.
Of course, they could get somebody else to come in here and rent it, and we'd have to vacate the premises. Then where are we gonna go?
Well, that was my question. Can we change this and send it back to them or?
I think we need to negotiate and negotiate.
That's what I'm saying.
Try to.
Can hire an arbitrator.
Let, let's, let's be honest. If we could get anything built in a year, we would be doing great, right? So I think if we do a year lease.
Buy a modular and knock all of all that. Put in a bunch of folding chairs.
Sixty months, I think.
Oh, this is the proposed lease.
Yeah, where, where, do you have a copy of the old lease? You have a copy of the old lease?
Usually when, usually a lease will include a provision that says what happens at, at the end of the lease.
Right.
This is very.
Anytime you have something that you own is a lot better than re- renting or leasing.
Oh, yeah.
Especially if you intend to be in business very long.
What are most.
Twenty two years.
But well, it's hard to say most. I, 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 I think most of them, maybe, maybe all of them with one or two exceptions own their own building.
That's valid, I mean.
Great.
So I'm sending twenty twenty. Pretty much the same. Just the pride. Pride is on a change.
Yeah, it doesn't say what happens at the end of the lease.
Let's, uh, let's come to a deal.
The only other option I thought, if, if they would sell this building, if they have any interest in that. And have offices upstairs and I don't know.
Maybe. They're, they're not gonna sell it.
Okay, I just thought we could ask them.
Yeah, we could rent it to them.
Yeah.
Then we could rent it to them. There you go.
Kind of like another building that I think would be neat, that the, the owners don't want to get rid of it. Um, so how, how long have they had this building, the Masonic Lodge?
Since, since probably the sixties? Fifty?
Since right after, well, when they built the new court, when they built the new courthouse. This, the courthouse was in here, and when they built the new courthouse, uh, the Masonic Lodge bought it from them. And I'm thinking that was the late eighteen hundreds, maybe early nineteen.
Because this was a post office too.
It's a post office, yeah.
The, the Masonic Lodge leased it to the post office.
Okay, so they were, they were still.
Early nineteen hundred. I can go look at our marker out there right quick and see.
Call for a motion and then.
Oh, what? Take a look until we can figure out something, you know, if it's cornered, tell them, no, we're not gonna pay that. We wanna negotiate. They may say, get out.
Have that a motion to authorize. Either you're Matt, or Wes, Wes. You're Matt, want me to uh, go get with uh, Mr. Welch, negotiate with him, see if we can, if they would be agreeable to, because he'd have to go back to his group, see if we could do it, you know. Well, our lease is up October first, right, or September?
I would think. Uh, all you need to do is, is uh, because I know totally real well, you know totally real. They're not gonna kick us out.
No, no.
They're gonna, they're gonna, all we wanna do is come to a agreement.
Agreement.
We're not, we're not telling, uh, I don't know how y'all feel, but just I would say that we're gonna look for our own property and so can you give us some time to do that? But it's not gonna be five years.
Right, right.
We're looking at, what we'd be looking at is a year, maybe a year and a half, but that's be probably the max. If they could hold off and uh, allow us, we'll agree to this price for that month. But it, not a, not a five year.
Right.
Does that sound okay?
Yeah, thanks, David.
Who do you want to handle the deal? You, can you do? So we need to make a motion to authorize the general manager
To negotiate.
To negotiate.
And then come back.
The rent.
And then come back for us to see whether approved or not.
So moved.
Alright, so I made the motion. Does that work?
Sure, second.
Alright, who's her second? Omar's her second? All those in favor, raise your right hand. Any opposed? Same sign. Alright. That passes and I will entertain a motion to adjourn.
Don't move.
Got a second for Matt? All those in favor, raise your right hand. Any opposed?
No.
Meeting's over with.